...in 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Town Hall of Halifax, 199 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., 02338, on the application by Perry A. Newnen for a special permit to build an addition for an in-law apartment to be located at 38 Orchard Circle, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Joseph and Perry Newnen of 38 Orchard Circle, Halifax, and is shown on Assessor's Map 90, Law 10H, Title Reference Book 30424, Page 41. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct an in-law apartment as an addition to the rear of the existing single-family home in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw section 167-7D-12, Schedule of Use Regulations, Specific Use Regulations, area is zoned for residential, petition number 969.
Would you like to speak to the application? What would you want to do?
Um, yes, I just want to put an in-law to the rear of my garage, to my parents, to assist with my job and my children who are at home, younger than children.
So the whole thing is 800, 840 square feet?
Yeah.
Do we know the square footage on the existing home? Um... I can look it up.
Yeah, I have all the information. You see?
What are you, what, what are you going to be sharing here?
Electricity.
You're going to share more electricity, you have to have, you have to have a common area.
Oh, there'll be a hallway that connects with the closet and, um, just a, you know, a door, just a regular door. There'll be a hallway that connects.
You got any floor plans?
You got any floor plans for this?
Yeah. So you can enter the garage as kind of closet that's going to be transitioned to a hallway?
You're going to have to share a living space, living area.
Okay.
You're going to have to design it. I haven't seen it yet.
Okay. Is the hallway with the closet considered a shared space?
That is not considered shared living space. You got to have the, a common area where you guys go in and sit and, you know, has to be an opening, has to, can't be closed up.
Okay.
I think at one time it was a six-foot opening. You needed a six-foot open between, between you and the common area.
This is 22 foot.
Let's say, let's say the next, the next room, you have to have a six-foot open where you share the living quarters with. You can put a door in there and all of a sudden it becomes a two-family. You don't want that.
So this door does, just a regular door now, can you make six feet this way for it?
It can't be in without a door, yeah? But then you still need a shared living area.
The exterior. So you would just have to open this up?
To have a shared living space. Garage is not shared living space. No, it has to be.
No, this looks like the same floor. It's on the same floor? Is this the first floor?
It's not on the first floor.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, you don't know. It has to be part of the first floor.
So this is, this is the in-law, that's, this is, this is where it's going right now. So they're saying that this is the empty space of the existing home. What's wrong? Really, there's no...
As long as they have a shared living area.
It would just have to share it there.
So my question better phrased is, does the six-foot open make it have to be to the room that shares?
Yes.
Can't be to the hallway if the room is off.
It has to be shared living. If you're going to go from here to here, it has to be shared.
Okay.
If you have, you know, just have the architect do it again or whatever. Shared living area.
If they, if they add some sort of...
Two things. One, where in the bylaws does it say six feet and not three? Because I've seen this board give a three feet to other people. And two, where in the bylaws would say they have to have the shared living space?
It's always been a six-foot opening.
Since when?
That's, as far as I, as long as I've been on the board, it's always been six foot, a three-foot opening.
Your previous board said that was past practice, so you follow it, but you don't have to follow it for everybody.
We do follow for everybody.
You don't follow for everybody.
Who don't we follow for? As long as I've been sitting on the board, we've always followed six.
It's always been a six-foot opening.
Yeah, what about the Home Street in-law?
What?
They have a three-foot variance on Home Street.
Home Street.
When was it built?
When was the house built? I'm not sure when the house was built, but I know that you let them have a three-foot variance. So I'm just curious where it says in our bylaws that there has to be a six-foot opening.
It was a bylaws.
Please don't speak out of turn, Will.
Well, as far as I, I've been on the board, it's always been six.
But what's written in the bylaws? These are certified copy.
Please don't speak out of turn.
I'm talking to the chair. If she be in.
Excuse me.
Oh, I thought it was Dashlin.
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
He called on me to talk a second ago, so.
Yeah, that's who I thought he was talking to.
Are you this guy that you can tell us?
Mr. Andrews.
Uh, last year, this board gave a special permit for an in-law to move a home on Home Street where there was no requirement for a six-foot opening. And in fact, the previous chairman said that there was no requirement for a six-foot opening in that meeting in the bylaw.
Do you know what the address was, so we can look it up?
It's Mary's. What, my house is not Mary's? You guys know, right?
I think this meeting is going to be a little bit nasty, so maybe need to lay down the rules that people in the town need to request too, because there's really too much going on, in my opinion.
Thank you.
So.
Right, Jim. So it sounds like we're making that a condition of a special permit in certain cases, and in one case we didn't, which we're allowed to do.
But was that pre-existing in the law?
I don't remember. I don't remember the case, but as far as, as long as I've been on the board, it's always been six-foot opening, so they won't be able to close it and put it via duplex.
I'm in agreement with that. I can't find where it says a six-foot opening.
Neither can I.
But, but are we saying we're making it a condition of the special permit?
It should be.
It should be.
It should be.
How can you make special conditions when it's not in the bylaw?
But it's always been, it's always been six-foot open.
A lot of years, doesn't mean it's right. Why you do one for one person and something else for something else? Somebody else?
Mr. Perry, it's always, as far as I've been on the board, it's always been a six-foot open.
But they're not square feet.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but it's always been. So they won't be able to close it and become a duplex. That's why we had a six-foot open.
You don't know what they're going to do down the road.
Or they have a square feet, yeah. We, no, we, nobody knows what they're going to do down the road, you know, they just... I understand.
You're making a big deal out of a six-foot opening versus a three-foot opening?
Ms. Nasbuck.
That makes sense?
If it needs to be six feet, we can make it be six feet. I just need to know. Have this plan laid out so that my parents can come to me with my children.
Mr. Perry, what did you, what did you?
Well, she can make a six-foot opening and down the road she can just close to a three-foot open, four-foot open. That's what everybody does, so I don't know what you guys think. They're going to do what they want to do.
Well, you have to, you have to enforce something, I mean.
Well, if it's in the bylaws, of course you should.
Excuse me, perhaps. Say your name.
John Walsh, I'm her father. I've lived in this town for 50 years. We had an unfortunate situation in our family.
We understand.
We're just looking to move in and give her a hand with the kids. That's all we're asking for. We're not asking for anything more or less, but I've lived here 50 years. Let's just get a little bit of consideration.
Just tell us how it has to be done so that it can work more appropriately placed.
Mr. Jim?
Sure.
We haven't even gotten to you yet, all right? This board is being challenged on something that really has nothing to do with you, and we apologize. But it's not us dragging you into this, okay? It's other people in the room dragging you into it, and we apologize. You don't deserve to be treated this way. And it's trying to be painted the other way, and it's exactly the other way around. We're talking about maybe one discrepancy in how many years you've been on board?
I've been on the board for 30 years.
All right, and you're saying maybe one? I, I, I could probably in two minutes take dozens of things people have done wrong, including other things that are going to come up with attorneys later tonight that were done wrong. So, um, come on, let's not drag these poor people into it. You guys haven't even been discussed yet. Don't worry about it, okay? I can see the anguish on your faces. Don't worry about it. Your upbringing dragged us something that has nothing to do with what's happening here.
Ms. Missarella. Is the bathroom considered shared living space?
What's that?
Bathroom. Is that shared living space?
No.
Okay, because I know that your bathroom is solid right here.
The utilities and the septic and a common area that they're going to be sharing.
Because I know they won't want to move this. I mean, everybody wants their first floor laundry. And so that seems like it's kind of in the way of this meeting being shared.
The first floor laundry is the same room.
Yeah, so, okay, I'm just trying to figure out a way to give her shared living space here.
The problem is, is that all of the living space is on the front of the house and to the side of the house where there's a pool, so there cannot be, the addition cannot go on either of those locations. Your garage isn't considered a shared space, so I have a closet that is going to become a hallway or a, um... Can I use the sitting area? That's if I can put it, I'll just put a chair in there if that makes the sitting area, sure.
I'm just trying to figure out how to make it living space for you to connect them.
It's always been that you share a living area with your, with your in-law.
Right, so I, so by definition of, excuse me, sorry. By definition of living area, I thought because it'd be a shared closet and a common hallway with an opening that doesn't have to have a door, that would be considered, it would be like walking from here to there.
I know we had the one on Thompson Street and they had like a shared foyer.
What's that?
The Thompson Street one, they're, I think they're just breaking ground. It was a shared foyer.
It would be like a shared mudroom area.
Do you remember? It was like the garage that kind of came off the side of the house. So I know the foyer worked with that. How could we work that for them?
This is the right age with the talking.
That's what, that's what they're sharing, that's it?
Yep.
That's all you're sharing.
They're sharing the bathroom.
Bathroom. Laundry area, no, like they have a laundry area here.
We're just trying to solve the problem easily for you, so I spend a ton of money.
So, excuse me, Ms. Nasarella, is a mudroom area considered shared living space? If there's a chair in there or a bench? So, I think we can give a definition of shared living space. I thought it was that income.
What do you think about?
I'm looking up shared living space. It just says, what I see so far just says shared living space. So there's no place they can put this addition here.
The wood is, the other decks. Unless they made that like a center of residence, they're cutting through deck.
This is existing now.
They only need to have a shared living space by definition.
So, Mr. Perry, what you're trying to say, as long as it's, there's a little, little area what they're sharing, it's, it's okay?
I can say that.
And what is it, what are you trying to say?
I don't mean, yeah, shared area, what do you want me to tell you? They could walk downstairs and use the living room, they're sharing that. I'm sure they're going to be down there watching TV with them, right? So, right? Definition of the shared living space, a common living area open to and used by both the main residents and the residents of the in-law apartment. Entryways, foyers, laundry areas, bathrooms, and other areas determined by his own board appeals are not considered shared living space per purpose of the bylaws. So like in a dining room, that's off the hallway, it's a shared living area. They can have their nails here. I'm just looking at the site too. There's no other place they can put the addition unless they make it, to make it work, you know, I mean, looking at the site itself, so we have to look at what can they be shared? And if this here can be the shared space, existing kitchen, yeah, they have to walk through to get to it, but still a shared area if you want to look at it that way. There's no other way of getting.
There really isn't.
No.
This is the way it's, it's set on the law.
Yeah, the law itself doesn't allow them to move this over. Even if they try to move this over, they'd be into their kitchen, and they can't do that, you know? It wouldn't allow them to get into the, it'd be a lot of expense and work to try and get something in here, and that would make this kitchen a lot smaller, so they really can't do that.
Yeah, and it wouldn't have to move this way.
Yeah. And off to the side, they can't do anything other because it's still the same, and they came into the garage. I mean, we've looked at, we've looked at other, other properties too that we've come up with ways of making it work, and I think we can probably look at this here the same way that they can probably use this here.
You think they should look at the way it is?
I think, yeah, I don't think they have any other choice, to be honest with you. I think using this here as being a shared space, I'm sure they're going to do it anyhow.
In here, because everybody's coming in here.
Well, that's just, that's an entrance, but it's not, it's not, it's really not, that wouldn't, that wouldn't allow anything, but this here gives them the ability to come through this area, and this here would be the shared space.
It's shared, it's shared in the bathroom.
And it, doing the kitchen too, as far as, you want to look at that here for dining? Yeah. Yeah, there's no other place they can put it. And I think the way it's set up, I don't think there's any way that they could, they could wind up making this an apartment in the future as far as that goes.
What do you think, Dan?
I think it's fine.
Anybody want to make a motion to waive the onsite? Kurt?
Yes, I just wanted to say, it's been on the, I agree with Mr. Perry that we've had in the past, plenty of blueprints and plans come before us that shows an addition, especially if it's new construction. And we pass it based on what's presented, we had passed it when, what was presented to the board, and down the road, you've been in the house, it's been changed, you know, from six to three or whatever it happened to be, but I'm sure it conformed on the occupancy permit when they, when they, that was signed off, or that it met the requirements that was presented here to the board, but like Mr. Perry said, anywhere down the road, you can change it to a, from a six to a three or, or change it or whatever. It's happened plenty of times, but nevertheless, what's presented to the board is assumed by the board that that's what they're going to conform to.
Can you state your name?
Jennifer Carroll. I live in Highland Woods, and I am absolutely for her doing this. Living in a Fury Brothers home, that you are limited to where you can build because of how the house is laid out, and they were kind enough to put certain beams so that if you wanted to do the basement, you wouldn't have columns and things. So I agree, and I do believe that it's in the Highland Woods covenants too, that they cannot turn this into an apartment, a sublet, or anything like that, so living in that neighborhood, I totally support her doing this.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion to?
Make a motion to approve.
You got to make a motion to waive the onsite.
To waive the onsite, is it?
I'll second it. Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Now, we need a motion to accept it as presented for an in-law apartment.
Make a motion to accept petition 969 as presented for an in-law apartment.
Saying they're going to, they're going to do what they want after this time.
They can move it out.
I know. As long as, as long as you keep the opening open, not put a door in there and keep it closed. Yes, we got to put a condition that it stays open. It doesn't, you know, become a two-family or put a door on it and, and then become a two-family. Anybody wants to make a motion to accept petition 969? You did?
I'll second it.
Did you put the condition on?
You want to put a condition?
With the condition that the door remains open.
Just a clarification, is this a door or a three?
A three foot.
No door, door.
No door.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Myself, yes. As a crowd, they're...
Oh, I think that's all. Yeah, this is us. Thank you.
Mr. Perry. The building form is in the paper on the desk, obviously. We are one.
Do you want me to?
Thank you all.
I'm going to check the next petition. Okay. Well, the next petition is 970, I have to recuse myself, and Jerry will be taking over the meeting.
The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 13th at 7:00 to 5:00 PM in the boards of Selectmen's meeting room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. on the application of Alan Diaz to appeal the building inspector's determination dated May 2nd, 2022. Per the building inspector, the applicant signs around the town were erected without signed permits. This is a violation of chapter 167-13 of the Town of Halifax ordering the illegal signs to be removed to be removed within 36 hours, or you'll be fined up to $300 per day per violation. Per the applicant, Mr. Perry fails to provide the locations of the signed permits, violation pursuant to chapter 167, 13F, paragraph 3. Uh, schedule of placement standards. Political signs are allowed to, as a matter of right, in every district. Mr. Perry fails to provide why any political signs... I don't have my glasses, so I'm doing good here.
Maybe we could hold it further away?
Fail to meet the standards set forth in chapter 167, 13A. Purpose: Mr. Perry fails to provide any detail or reasoning why these signs are not in compliance with 167-13B. Definitions: Political signs, a sign designated to influence the actions of voter for the passage or defeat of a measure or election of a candidate to a public office at a national, state, or other local election. The applicant is appealing the building inspector's determination pursuant to Halifax zoning bylaw, chapter 167-3A1, zoning appeals in MGL, chapter 40A, section 8, appeals to permit granting authority in section 15. Appeals to permit granting authority, notice time, boards of appeal, hearings, procedure, petition 970.
Okay. Would you like to, uh?
The, uh, Mr. Jim, Alan Diaz, no, straight. I have appealed the building inspector's phone call and lathered to me. And as my petition stated, an audit to defend, Mr. Perry fails to provide the location of the signs in our last minute open session. Do you want to provide the location of the signs? I will. Okay, then, at this point, I want Mr. Perry to see, because at this point, I'm in violation of the whole 167-13, he fails to provide the date and timing picture. You took the picture? What picture? Was there a written complaint pursuant on our own bylaws? Mr. Perry's actions need to be, when they come to zoning, need to be filed by the written complaint? And the fact that that complaint should have been provided to me? Now, on that, the, Mr. Perry's actions or orders demanding that these signs be removed in 36 hours is contrary to the bylaw. And again, there's no reasoning that these particular signs, which I have, and we'll introduce these signs now, if it makes sense, that these are not strictly flood signs. I can't really defend an action if I don't know where these signs were.
All right, Mr. Perry, will you tell us what?
Want me to rebut that?
If you would, yes, yeah.
Well, first of all, I'd like, I'd like to, you read the letter, my letter to him in the record. Did you do that yet?
Uh, no, I have not.
That's the letter I sent Mr. Diaz on my afternoon. I drove through town on Friday evening around 5:30 and saw a sign. Monday morning, I gave Mr. Diaz a call at 8:00 in the morning, courtesy call, if you will, to have him come by the office and we could discuss the some, the non-political signs that he had written around town. At that point, I didn't have a corner of coming signs for around town. Mr. Diaz quickly told me, send me a letter, just send me a letter. Then I said, I would send you a letter, and I told him at that time, I said, I'm going to tell you what the letter's going to say. It's going to say you need to remove the signs because they're illegal. If you want to come in and get a permit for the signs, come on in, okay? He said, he got bludgeoned on the phone with me and threatened me and said that he was going to put up more signs. So how could I quantify how many signs were around town? I mean, he's up putting up more signs, okay? So that's, that's what happened back.
All right. Did you, did you explain the reasoning why you?
Why you have a chance to, man, so he cut me off, and he sends me a letter, which I'd like to introduce into the record. On May 3rd, basically, he accused me of threatening him, and he actually is threatening me with that letter. Okay, we classic case the two are way to the dog. He puts a lot of demands in his letter toward me. All I wanted to do was turn him aside. All I wanted to do was come in and talk to him.
Why don't I read these here into the record, so, um?
Check for glasses.
Are they just reading?
You build me up more than I wanna be.
Okay. Town of Halifax Building Department, May second, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Alan Diaz, One Snow Street, Halifax, Mass. zero two three three eight. Read illegal signs. Dear Mr. Diaz, per our phone conversation, it has come to the attention of this office that there are numerous signs around town that were erected without permit signs, without signed permits. This letter is to inform you that this is a violation of chapter one sixty-seven dash thirteen of the town of Halifax zoning bylaws. The photo of the signs in question are attached to this letter. These signs are not political signs and are subject to a signed permit. I am hereby ordering the illegal signs to be removed within thirty-six hours, or you'll be fined up to three hundred dollars per day per violation. You can apply for signed permits at the building department Monday to Thursday, eight to four P M. If you do not agree with this determination, you can appeal the decision, uh, to the zoning board of appeals. Sincerely, James Perry, Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Right, and I'll read this response. Alan Diaz, May second, twenty twenty-two. James Perry, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. is zero two three three eight. Illegal signs. Dear Mr. Perry, I am in receipt of your letter emailed to my office today. First issue is that there is pending litigation, and your letter seems to be retaliatory. This will be my only response to you until such time as this litigation is resolved. Twelve inhabitants, first the town, town of Halifax. I will ask council to include this letter, as necessary, in the pleadings. Any further contact with me should be done by your council or another member of the staff, of your staff. Please be advised that any future communications from your office must be done by the, by first-class mail. Second issue, chapter one sixty-seven dash thirteen is a very large section of our bylaws. I do choose what sections of the bylaws I'm in violation of. I quote from thirteen, one sixty-seven dash thirteen. Definitions: Political sign, a sign designed to influence the action of voters for the passage or defeat of a measure or election of a candidate for a public office at a national, state, or other election. My signs are such. In my opinion, I have not violated any provisions of chapter one sixty-seven dash thirteen, therefore have no idea what I, what I'd appeal to the zoning board of appeals for. Again, I want to remind you that I will not accept phone calls from you threatening three hundred dollars a day fines. Your action as a puppet for the selectmen's office will not intimidate me. Please remember, we have a constitution. My political views and opinions are protected by that document. Any attempts to intimidate, harass me will result in legal action against you and the town. Respectfully submitted, Alan Diaz.
I emailed him a copy of that letter. I sent U.S. mail, and I also sent verified return request. So I wanted him to get that information as soon as he could. So, because he refused to come and talk to me. So. Those are the signs on five streets. If he needs dates, I can get them off my phone. He's only trying for a sign down the town. Probably more, that's all I can come up with.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Is there a copy available?
Oh.
Possessing all the, and going private property.
Uh, I don't wanna go there now. There actually are public property, a lot of them, because they're in the, they're within the road layup.
Okay.
You know, people, uh, you know, when you put up a little sign, yeah, it's gotta be on here, on, not in the town layer.
So, reasoning was wanting to be sent back over for a while?
Correct, yeah, that's all. Six eighteen back.
Is that what you?
Uh, a lot of, a lot of those signs were on vacant properties, bank-owned properties, which there were no permission given. I'm sure which ones were those. Right on, on Ocean Ave, where I saw the house now. I'm told the town allows people to put signs on the islands up at fifty-eight and one oh six. I don't believe they voted that this year to allow people to do that.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Get my name. I think we're getting a little off skew here. Why here? You think it's okay?
Wait, wait, please. Just let him speak. You are speaking to.
Mr. Jim, this particular picture is what I see from Mr. Perry. Now, Mr. Perry wants to come up with twenty-four violations, that's up here. I think those other pictures are irrelevant. That's the picture that he sent me that I was in violation of. Can I ask through you to Mr. Perry, what is the location of that sign? And what time and day did he take a picture?
Mr. Perry, can you provide the location, the time?
Three forty-eight Mont Pontus Street.
Three forty-eight Mont Pontus?
Yes.
And what time?
Around five thirty.
Around five thirty, yeah, all right.
I was going to dinner.
Three forty-eight Mont Pontus Street around five P M.
Okay, five thirty.
Yeah.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
That's a lie? Okay.
Can you?
That picture, and we'll do a site visit if you want. That picture was from a property on Twonest Street, and it was there on Saturday, regardless. Oh, so, oh, excuse me, Mr. Jim. Regardless, does that mean that he's just gonna guess? Or is he making out telling the truth? Look, Mr. Jim?
Please.
Mr. Jim, he wrote me for violation for that particular sign at that particular location. And he can't tell you honestly where that was?
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
I put in my letter numerous signs around town. I did not limit it to three signs that I happened to get a photograph, that I took a photograph. Did not do that. So I left the door open, because there were more signs that he told me that morning that he was gonna place more signs up. Basically telling me, you're out of luck, pal. You are the building official, the zoning enforcement officer, but I'm gonna do whatever I want.
Mr. Chairman, he called me that morning. The conversation was limited to, he identified himself. He said there were signs around town. He said, if you disagree with my particular signs, send me a letter. He said to me, look, I'm telling you that you've got thirty-six hours to take those signs down, or you're gonna get a three hundred dollar a day fine. And what I gave him was some doubts on me. That was the limit of that conversation. All right? So this far-fetched conversation that I threatened him on the phone, um, I didn't, I never met the guy before, so why would I threaten? But regardless, the issue is that picture, where it was located, okay? And Mr. Perry is not being truthful and forthright. The letter that I got from the selectmen's office, that he had no record of where these, these, uh, uh, signs were. Some law said today has a record.
Do you have questions?
No, 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 second question. Once I get through the chair.
Good.
There was a record request by Mr. Diaz to the, to the town administrator that, that kicked up to my office. And no, I did not have any official complaints, because I saw the signs. So why would I have any official complaint?
Mr. Jim, just, second, second, just, I'm gonna just add this, okay? Three forty-eight Plymouth Street, you said, is that where the sign was? Three forty-eight Mont Pontus Street. Okay. Is that in the area of Mr. Andrews's sister's house?
No.
Oh, it's not. Mr. Andrews's sister was not on the body to that particular property?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay, sir.
Dan?
So to me, come down with a couple of things, just playing something, okay? Try to keep. First question is, why aren't those political?
I can answer that.
Okay? That's one question you can answer. And you, and so in your opinion, because to me, they're obviously political.
Okay.
Okay.
Under section one sixty-seven thirteen, I believe, B., B., under definitions, political sign. A sign designated to influence the action of voters for the passage or defeat of a measure for the election of a candidate to public office at a national, state, or local election. Okay? Do those signs, are they, are they supporting any voter?
Yeah, mine actually says on it.
Yeah, but is it, does it support a voter for candidate for office?
Uh, um.
I don't think voters.
Yeah.
They don't?
They don't need to say that.
So they absolutely do?
So you're saying so many stands put up a sign that no matter how you vote, vote, that would be a violation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no.
Just wait.
You're not gonna get, read it, read it again.
All right, so now let's talk about.
Read it again, okay, yeah. Let's not skip it.
That's fine.
Let's be specific.
Sure. He signed designated to influence the action of voters.
Period, right, right?
Hold on, you can't read part of it. You gotta read the whole subject.
And you can't read into it either, go ahead.
I'm not reading into anything. I'm reading what's here in print.
Go ahead.
The job bylaws, not mine.
Yeah? Not yours, for the zoning enforcement.
Yeah, well, they were here before I got here, so I can't handle that. Uh, all right. To influence the action of voters for the passage or defeat of a measure, which, in case nobody knows what a measure is, there's a definition of a measure you can pass out around. It's like voting, no, on proposition one, or, 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 yeah. Question, yeah. There's no, there's no, there's no, uh.
Did you go on that website?
I didn't go on that website.
So how do you know that that doesn't lead you to all kinds of things they want you to vote for?
Does that look like a, uh, supporting a candidate or, uh, or a motion?
It could be, yeah. You go on the website and look.
And it certainly looks like it's not, but it's like, because it looks like, uh, like the signs.
Okay, just to be clear, that's your opinion. That's.
That's what I'm here for.
It's right, and that's what I'm here for.
Right.
And, um.
If you don't, if you think that's a political sign.
I'm asking, sayhalifaxmass.org, put up prior to an election, and you don't go on the website and look at it before you make that determination, I just feel it's kind of lame, you just say.
Lame?
Yeah, you should have looked at it, that's all it said. So both voters gotta go, will they run for election?
Who's voting? Take those signs and put them aside. Take those signs.
No, I don't need any more questions.
I mean, come on, what are you gonna put up?
On that one, on that one, I don't need.
We know who voted it.
All right, so why didn't you just ask me who they are?
Because it's not a political sign. If they said, hey, vote for the other guy that's going against voting, I'm all for it. That's, that's a hate sign. To me, this is all hate signs, okay?
Okay.
And if this is the way you guys want it, do elections going forward? Good luck. That's the way you wanna set the tone of your town. It's up to you people, okay? But I don't think there's any place in Halifax for that kind of stuff.
It's not.
Do what you wanna do.
I mean, you can't fix stupid, please vote. I think.
You're the person.
You can, it says, everybody says can't, but you can.
Well, it's not.
Just a twist.
You can't, you can't, you know why, you know why I did that? Because I was the one, I couldn't see this picture, I was looking at it all the time.
Make it sound more positive.
So, um, you can't fix stupid, please vote. They're asking people to vote. If you vote, you affect an election.
Are they, are they, uh, supporting a candidate?
You're talking, you're talking about fifty percent of the signs around America are like that. Good Lord, don't wanna court supporting your opinion. No problem.
No problem, no problem.
I mean, unless you go on, I mean, you're arguing with me. Who's voting? You said, who's voting?
Well, take the signs individually on their own merit. And as far as him saying, you don't know which sign.
Own merit, you mean, like you didn't know there was election going on?
Take them, take them separately and look at them. Do they look like a regular political sign, uh, having, getting a vote, uh, a person for election?
Yes, if you live in this town and you read the newspaper.
Okay. I think the newspaper.
Then my second question is, it seems that your other opinion was, um, because it was ambiguous where the property line was. It was like a right-of-way, or the town's only so many feet from the center of the road. Okay? I mean, we all know when you've had a lovely neighbor, like I have in the past, and they go on your property, even with the burning permit, and they burned down your property over your line. You know, there's something called ambiguous lines that the insurance companies recognize. I think that if that was one of your conditions, I don't think that it was approached correctly, maybe from either side, that at least that couldn't have been recommended if you felt that was one of the issues. I think to fine somebody three hundred dollars a day because of an imaginary ambiguous line, how many other people have, did you go around and count how many other people had their signs supposed to be first light?
I told you, we're not going there about the signs on public property. Because not only were told they had to give them back off the road.
Okay, so that's not.
I tried to get ahold of all the candidates.
So that's my issue for you?
No, perfect. And I, can I complete my statement?
Yeah, but it's, you went, you went to the, but, but, there's no problem.
And I didn't fine him three hundred dollars a day.
You threatened to fine him.
I didn't threaten to fine him. I wrote, I just told him it was in the bylaw. He may be fined up to three hundred dollars a day. It has not been determined yet.
Well, the citizen takes that as a threat, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you know, we could follow everybody here, I could.
One second, one second.
He's not, he's not, you know.
Bob, do you have anything you wanna, you wanna add?
I don't know at this time.
Okay, Tina?
We'll let it ride out for a bit, see what's next.
All right.
We all set on what is, uh, you know?
I think we have, what we have, we got a couple of people here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, Chairman, just to clarify something before you general to the audience. Mr. Perry had just testified that he was going to dinner, and he saw my sign around five thirty at three forty-eight Plymouth Street? Excuse me, three forty-eight Mont Pontus Street? I think that was the information.
That was correct, yep.
There is no three forty-eight Mont Pontus Street according to your assessment, so this is the right.
Okay.
All right.
Here is a Mont Pontus Street.
All right.
Uh, no, you're gonna turn it over.
I'm gonna turn it, I wanna, I wanna get a few more.
Hold on.
Oh, yeah, okay. Continue on then.
Mr. Diaz's, uh, appeal here basically has four or five stories filed against him. The first one, Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry fails to provide the location of the sign, permit, violation. So again, I did not know the quantity of signs or locations at the time I contacted him and sent the letter. Just wanted to make that clear. Uh, his second, his second, uh, chapter one seventy, one sixty-seven thirteen F. three, scheduled placement standards, allows a matter of right in every district. I agree with that. If they were political signs, they have no problem with that. Third part, Mr. Perry fails to provide detailed reasoning why these signs are not in compliance. And the signs don't meet the standard of political signs, as I'm determined. That's my determination, in my opinion. Okay? I had to make a ruling on it, and that's what I did. That's basically it.
Okay.
So it comes down to the definition of political signs. Whether you think that those are political signs or not, based on what the definition of the bylaws is, based on the definition of the bylaws, or anything else.
Okay. Questions? Amy?
Um, I have a question. Did anyone on the board, the zoning board of appeals, have any of these signs in their yard?
Did anyone have any of these signs in the yard?
No.
Nope.
Well, we don't see that as relevant. That's why you're.
He's not here.
Right. Right.
You mean, he was here?
Yeah.
No, nobody here.
Well, she didn't say he was here. She said anybody who's on his sort of pills, right?
No.
He refuses to.
Correct.
He's not here. No.
I think there's a, a couple of things that have to be looked at. And first of all, the number one, uh, the sign, sign's legal as far as size goes. Do they meet the requirements that are spelled out in the, in the bylaws? You know, as far as sign position. Number two, I think, you're, according to the bylaws, it was only allowed two per block, lot, parcel. And I think you also have to, they have to be up with permission. So I think if, if, um, you know, Mr. Diaz can say, yes, I talked to these people, whether the boundary line was a foot off or six inches off or whatever, did he have permission to put these signs up? Or did he just randomly go on people's property and put signs up? And the third thing that, that I do wanna bring up was, even when, you know, Mr. Perry was here last year at the last previous election, there were, well, by his definition, I guess you'd call them non-political signs that were up that said, if you're in, you're out. And now, there were no names on that, there were, but they were allowed to be up in town, but yet we've kinda changed the rules this year. There were plenty of signs that said, if you were in, if you're in, you're out.
Where, stole my thunder.
I'm sorry?
You stole my thunder.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
I wanna worry, Benny.
But, you know, it's, so I think the, what I'm saying is it's important to be consistent. Like Mr. Perry said, last year, we, well, not just last year, previous years, we're allowed to put signs up in front of the, you know, elementary school on the island there at 58 and 106, and we've been doing that for 100 years. It's kind of an obvious exaggeration. So I think consistency is important too. So if, if, if there were no fines in, in letters sent out and whatnot for, for previous elections, then I think it's kinda hard to, all of a sudden, okay, now we're gonna set up a new set of rules.
We had a different building inspector.
I'll get you next. Yes?
Mr. George Coanders, uh, through you to the building inspector. When did he become appointed to the building inspector? Was it previous to the May 2021 election? Or was it after it was?
I will ask. When was you appointed?
August 2nd.
Okay, so that was after the election?
March 21st.
Okay.
My bad.
Not a problem. Ashley?
That was my point. My point was is now we have a new zoning enforcement officer and a new building inspector. He's choosing to follow the bylaws to the way he sees fit. And I think it's important that the town and the zoning board and everybody respects and supports him and his decisions. I know he doesn't take his job lightly. I know he's spoken to council. So because it's how we have done it before, does not make it right. And I think that's something that we have to keep going with on all boards, not just this one. I hear that a lot. Well, we've always done it this way. Okay, but that's not what a bylaw's saying, and that doesn't mean it's right.
Okay.
So if he takes his job seriously, when he has complaints in his office, why doesn't he look into it? A lot of zoning violations choose to ignore them. A lot, a lot of these in our apartments being converted to family homes, yet you guys don't look into it? Excuse me, which ones? We're not... That's all I had to say. We'll, we can discuss... Well, if you wanna accuse me of something, uh, not enforcing something, if I, if it comes to my attention, I'll enforce it. Don't tell me I ignore it. We have discussion later on the Lake Street. That's correct. Now, gentleman had a permit to do what he had to do with it.
I think, part of the, part of the problem, Jim, is that, uh, we'll send out a request, and it takes a month, maybe a little bit more than a month to get a response from you. So that kinda...
We don't get that right now.
Well, that's, that's to explain what he just mentioned. So I just wanted, you come back to him, so I just wanna let you know why we're, why he's, why we're saying that.
The last time I had a conflict, I couldn't make the meeting.
All you gotta do is tell us that. We had no, you know, all we know is that we don't get a response, that's all.
Fair enough.
That's all.
No problem.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, just to, uh, one of the previous speakers, I'm just going to address that particular picture. That's the picture he sent me, so I would hope the board would focus in on that particular address. As I indicated, that was a Plymouth Street address, okay? Uh, they've been friends of mine for 40 years, and I in fact did have permission to put them up. I don't know that Mr. Perry's qualified to determine which part of the layout or which part of these streets that we have in town, uh, were or not D-signs in the layout or none of them. Now, if Mr. Perry felt as though the signs in these other locations were in violation, did he in fact cite the home? This is my first, um, knowledge of D-signs. And I'm sure that if I look at these, I put them up, and I have a list of all the addresses I put them up. I think that Mr. Perry's not being forthcoming that in fact he did see the signs, because he didn't see the signs, okay? Is that, you can take a look at that picture, is that Mr. Perry's pot? You can look at the dashboard. And we can do a site visit, and I'll show you where those signs were. And those signs were up for two hours.
Fair.
So, in, in closing, Mr. Perry's not being forthright. Mr. Perry got a phone call or got something from the Sleckman's office, and that's why he called me eight thirty on Monday morning. I'm gonna ask if this board overturned his decision. Thank you.
Perry, you want the response you had handed? Nope?
That's not the case. It's all, I mean, look, he's twisting the whole argument around. We're not talking about block lines and street layouts and public plans. We're talking about illegal political signs. They're not political signs, they're legal signs, okay?
Well, I think that's...
He wants to bring in, he wants to drag in all these other matters who would take focus off the fact that they're illegal signs. And they're not political signatures.
Well, I think what we have to determine...
According to the bylaws.
I think what we have to determine as to whether these are political signs or they're not. That's what this whole thing comes down to.
That's not the definition of...
You can tell me about all the property lines and everything else, but if I drive down when there's a political campaign going out, there's signs everywhere in the street. They're not behind, eight feet behind there. They're all over the place. So that, to me, that's not the issue.
Not the issue.
The issue here right now is whether we think those signs are political signs or they're not. It's that simple.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of note, I did forward a brief that I had submitted to the board, and I wanted to make sure that that becomes part of the record. It does not have to be read into the record. With the research that I did with the political signs, it has a breakdown of, of, uh, what people don't like about political signs in the vulgar language. And although there are a lot of signs out there with the vulgar language, those are political signs. We like them or we don't like them. And it's no different than the black lines matter, and the blue lines matter, okay? And the police signs, okay? They're all some sort of type political sign. For someone to just decide that Gordy gotta go, or you can't fix stupid, is not a political sign, okay? I'm not sure whether you should be working.
Oh.
Okay.
Right here in black and white. In your zoning bylaws.
And I've read the bylaw myself.
Yep.
Is my brief gonna be part of the record?
Anything that you've submitted, I will make sure that it's part of the record.
It's read in. It's lengthy.
It's very, it's very lengthy, and I don't want for everybody, if everybody had a chance to read it, that's what makes sure that I've done.
And the ACLU opinion and all that.
Yes, there's, there's, there's a lot of ACL opinions on political signs.
Nobody is trying to, uh, interfere with Mr. Diaz's First right, First Amendment right. Nobody's trying to interfere with that. All I told him was he needed to come down and get a sign permit, he wants to put those out. Theory.
And he's saying that they're political? And we have to determine whether they are or they aren't?
Okay. It's up to you guys.
I have to say, everybody should be very pleased that you can come to a board hearing, and the public has to speak. I think that's awesome.
Thanks, Joe.
This country was founded on it.
All right, well, I'll start it off. I mean, I look at these signs, and I have no problem with them, to be honest with you. I'm resident of the town. I know what's going on. The first sign, I would have to go to that site to see what it says. But to me, it's telling me, yes, to save Halifax, go there, see what it says. I can believe it, or I don't believe it. But I think that's fine. The last sign, you can fix stupid, please vote. I mean, that is something that everybody's gotta know. I mean, we've got a political system that is actually in disarray. And if you don't do anything by not voting, you're stupid. That's the bottom line. You have to go out and vote. Don't complain if it doesn't go your way and everyone has a problem, you didn't vote. So that's a sign to get your ass off the floor and go in and vote. The last sign, both Gordys got to go. Right, unfortunately, we both know, both of the Gordons that have things in this town, their positions in the town. Everybody knows who Gordy is, or the Gordons are. I mean, to me, that is a sign. Unfortunately, it's a sign, but it's a political sign. It says they gotta go. That's just saying, in your, in whosoever's opinion, if you don't want them in town, vote against them. Period, it doesn't, that's, that's what it says. So I mean, you have to decide whether you wanna do that or not. That's the same thing if you set a sign, don't vote for Nixon. I didn't, but don't vote for Nixon. I mean, that's, that's a political sign. All right, I go way back. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna say anything recent, because that's a problem. But I mean, this is, this is what goes on. I mean, these are signs, they're not, they're not vicious. I don't see any of them being vicious on it. It's just, it's just a sign. I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay.
And I'll ask everyone on the board, whatever they think. That's the way I see it. I don't see them as not political signs.
I think political signs, 100%, it's not political. I agree, I think they're political signs, and, and, and discussion about political events in that town.
Anyone else have anything to say? Yes?
Guys, of course, Mr. Chairman, who's, uh, who are the members voting on this?
It'll be Dan, Bob, myself, Tina, and yeah, well, we're all voting, because we have, uh...
So is the four of you?
Yes, there's the five of us, yeah.
All the five, okay.
Yeah. Okay, uh, does someone wanna make a motion? Well, it was a more discussion, let me put it that way there. All right.
I sent out a letter over there from, uh, Mr. Diaz to the town administrator. Like that would be very good record also. Another threatening letter.
Uh, which one is that? Is that going to Ed Thon?
Yeah.
I got it, yep. Alan Diaz, May 22nd, 2022. Ed Thon, Town Administrator, Town of Halifax, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338. Read. James Perry, Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Mr. Thon, I am placing, I am, I am placing to Town of Halifax on notice that I will be seeking reimbursement and damages financially for any and all lost wages, research time, emotional distress, fees charged by the town and legal fees for Mr. Perry's actions as zoning enforcement officer and the town, and the town's actions to suppress my legal rights threatening alleged zoning violations. As Mr. Perry's direct supervisor, I am asking you to order him not to approach me, nor do I want to discuss any matter regarding alleged violation, zoning violations with him. He has approached me on two occasions after I warned him that with the pending legal matter, I didn't want to talk with him. There will be a public forum to discuss his actions as a zoning enforcement officer. Therefore, therefore, fail not. I am approached again. I will seek judicial relief for no contact order. Alan Diaz.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to make, uh, clarify, the preference is not a law, it's, Mr. Perry approached me while I was conducting some business in the Board of Health Office. Charged up to me, attempted to shake my hand. I had a backup, and I said, look, I don't need to speak with you. And the rest is pretty factual. That's why I put this before on notice, okay? There was no reason for him to approach me in the Board of Health Office. And based on I, it cost me to appeal a decision which I believe was completely erroneous, okay? That could be, very well could be employee negligence, all right? And I should be reimbursed for my time and fees based on the fact that Mr. Perry, it's my belief, was working as an agent for one of our Sleckman. So...
I, I hear you, but...
That's okay, he wanted it read into the record, but it's not gonna do the board.
Mr. Perry is the, is the zoning board enforcement officer.
Correct.
And his responsibility is go out and do his job. And if his opinion, uh, that's why it comes to the board. If we don't accept that opinion, then it's, then it's, but he has the right to do that. There is no reason why he can't go out, being the zoning enforcement officer, and do what he thought was right. That was his opinion. As the officer, he can do that.
Obviously, he didn't go out on 6 o'clock on Saturday night to look at that particular sign, so, okay? But that's...
I mean, that's regardless, yes, Mr. Perry.
Yeah. Mr. Diaz, uh, enough, I'm not even gonna go there. No, nothing to say.
I, I don't think we have to get into anything else on this here. Unfortunately, everything, everything seems to go well, well and above beyond, or it should. This is, this is a complaint that you brought. He is challenging it. We're here, and we're looking at what these signs mean. And we're, we're gonna resolve that. That should end, that should end the discussion. There shouldn't be any of this animosity going around. We have that through town, we don't need that.
Just, just be mindful of the definition of a political sign.
That's, I read that, and I, I, that's my, my interpretation of it.
Okay, well, that's your opinion.
Yeah, that is, this is my opinion.
Okay.
All right, do we have anyone that wants to make a, oh, excuse me? Does someone have a?
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Oh.
I, I, um, well, I was just gonna say, um, I believe that 12 residents, and he is one of them, that is suing the town currently for the building inspector's job. So it's kind of a conflict going on because of that.
That's beyond this, this board. We're only here to, you know, that's, that's one of the problems. Everybody comes in here and have...
I listen to the chairman.
I know, they, they always have another agenda. We're here, we're here strictly for the zoning board. That's all we're here for.[1611.81]
No, I'm just saying that's the.
But that's.
What's worse than having to go home for two years and get a paycheck? No problem, thanks.
That's, that's way beyond our, our rules and regulations right here. We're here for the zoning, period. Does anyone want to make a motion on this petition?
I'll make a motion for petition 972 overturning Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer's decision that these are not political signs.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Voting?
No, because I saw him pull up with his truck at a seven-year-old's softball game.
I don't wanna hear about all that, yes or no, that's all we need to hear. Okay, yes.
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 We're voting?
Yes, we're voting.
Yes.
All right, so it's four to one and it passes. Okay.
Next?
Next. What do we have next? Messiah, come on in. Thank you. I'm good, right? When I gotta read something, it gets all blurred.
You can continue.
We can continue, yes.
You can continue.
What do we have next? I'm not even sure.
14.
Yeah.
Petition group, what people, site reviews?
Yeah, I know. He's just, he's calling in to, let us say no. Hello?
I hear you.
Can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you now, go ahead.
Great, great. Hey, if you don't mind, I'd like to, to conversate with the developer here real quick. Maybe just a minute, I need to sit in the call here.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Yeah.
Is that it?
I'm gonna hand this to the program, just pick up a conference call on from my phone here, and please join us on the call.
Okay.
Nathan, we are now on with the Town of Halifax Building Board of Appeal.
Yes. Brian.
Yep, I'm here.
All right.
Brian, speak.
Well, what we wanted to get together with you and discuss was the opportunity or what the likelihood of that, achieving a couple of variances for this property that Nathan is looking to develop. Uh, he's looking to develop retail in the medical office on this side and then potential, also a potential fast food restaurant. Uh, we had this in a preliminary site playing a couple of months back, knowing that the setbacks, the side yard setbacks and the parking, we were turning the vision on. So just, and we're seeking an opportunity to visit here, I guess we'll say, obviously not formally, but to see what the opportunities are to, to potentially achieving variances.
We have a plan? We do have a plan, yeah.
The other thing I would mention to you is, um, I'm also curious how the water sewer runs on the south side of the road there.
Yeah, and I don't know if this particular board would know that about the water and sanitary or not, Nathan.
We don't have.
This board has nothing to do with the water systems or sanitary systems. We do know that you have to get a planning board review first before we can even mention anything about setbacks or variances that you might be looking for. Uh, you, you're coming to this board, but you're, you're premature in asking for any kind of advice. We can't do anything until we know what the plan has actually been approved as.
Okay, well, just, I mean, we were directed to speak to you first, that's the reason that we approached you this way.
Well, I gotta be honest with you, Alan, our secretary has sent you a number of emails saying that you have to go to the planning board first. We're not the first person that you come to, and she's explained that in a couple of emails. Uh, we've all read them all. But you insisted on wanting to talk to us, but you're gonna get the same answer, unfortunately. Uh, there's not much we can do here until you get a plan review from the planning board, a slight plan review, yeah. And do you have that, do you have an appointment yet to have that taken care of?
We do not.
Well, that, that's your first step. This board cannot help you at all until you get that planning board review.
We need to know what the site is gonna look like before we even give you a decision.
Anything we said there would be meaningless.
That's right.
At this point.
If you're looking for a variance, you need to hardship for that variance.
Yeah, I understand. Nathan, I guess, do you have any other questions?
Uh, I don't, just, I guess, sorry for wasting your time, didn't, didn't mean to do that. Uh, we'll, we'll give them a planning board and, uh, I guess, we'll be back to you when we're ready.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're way ahead of themselves because they're actually already advertising it for lease.
Is that right?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is 100 Lake Street, the co-plant. Mr. Perry, can you answer that?
Yeah. That guy was issued a permit to replace a roof, front door, siding around the front door, windows, pages, basically get the building waterproof. Uh, I first got a call from a neighbor, they didn't think he had a permit. He did in fact have a permit, but wasn't posted in the window. I went down there, told him to post the permit in the window. And he came, he called in the office, he had hit more decay on, when he removed the front door than he thought he was gonna hit. He ended up taking more of the siding off, so, uh, he called me on every turn when he hit other issues involved when he started opening things up.
Is there another building on that?
There is a, there is a building on the rear of the property.
Is that gonna be used by anyone other than?
I can discuss the other building with him. They're on two separate lots, as far as I know.
Okay, on the side lots? The back one is on the side lot?
They're both.
But he's only, he's only fixing the front lot?
Correct.
And how far is he along with it?
Uh, I went by there last week. Uh, the outside is tight, I told him he could not do any more work because there was some removal of drywall on the inside because of the rot situation. Uh, I told him not to do any more work inside the building until he pulled another permit.
What he's done so far is up to your satisfaction?
Yes.
Any members of the board want to add to this?
No, I think that's fine.
Mr. Chair.
Anybody in the audience?
Yeah.
Mr. Diaz?
On the Lake Street, very familiar with that property, I imagine, on the bottom. I don't know why, I don't think about the permit being issued. But to give you a little history on that property, there are two structures with one septic system on that particular property. Somehow the bank made a mistake and mortgaged the rear portion or that rear structure, all right? And the front structure was owned by the gentleman's mother. The bank foreclosed on it, but it's been a problem since then because there is no septic system on one of those particular properties.
So the front one doesn't have the septic system?
Well, I can't tell you which one's not got that septic system. I can tell you that there, the lot was too small to be subterrated. It's an error that the bank made. I've looked at that folder from the Board of Health perspective a dozen times. I've been out there on inspections. Uh, I know that Fane may own it, and Fane may have to get them to clean up some rubbish that was deposited there. But, um, the rear structure, from my experience, has no septic system, so I don't know how you want to issue a building permit with no sanitary search. Now, I can tell you from, um, from discussions that there might be the potential that the rear structure through planning might be able to be subdivided off of that with access off of, let me express, D Street and not Lake Street. But there's a lot of history in there. I have no idea what the complaint is, but there's a lot of history there. The bank created this problem, uh, so issuing permits, that's up to him. That just you back on that property. It's two different owners.
Evening, Chief. Antonio said, I have a copy of the Board of Health file where it states that it is a shared system and it was signed off in '05 or '06. It is, um, it was two lots and you would have, and, and they ended up sharing. It was an ashy property where a son and a daughter owned it, it's not, I mean, a mother owned it, and it is a shared system according to the Board of Health records that I have actual documentation of that I could bring to you.
I think this property was marvelous before I noticed something about a shared system.
It was.
Mr. Chairman, it's not a shared system by definition.
Can we, can we get a proof of what, what's going on there with if it's shared or if it's not shared?
It's in the file, it's in the Board of Health file. He's in the, he's in the butter.
I don't know.
We just, we just like to know what's, what's going on with the property, if it's, if it has one septic system or.
I believe it's a shared system.
What's that?
I believe it's a shared system.
It's a shared system.
I believe it is. But I think.
Can we find out a little bit more about it?
I can, yeah. I think Mr. Perry's answered what the board has asked him of all.
Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Chairman, did the previous speaker say that he's in the butter and he went and acted as a member of the Board of Health on that property?
I believe he did.
Maybe. Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, I own to the back of that property.
You own the back of the property?
I own about 40 acres of swamp. So that's what abuts that particular property, all right? The matter was not discussed at a board meeting. Uh, there had been two or three people that had keyed in to find out what was going on with that property, trying to either buy the front or buy the back, all right? It is not a shared system. A shared system by definition, uh, these folks need to read the definition and clarify, all right? The system was installed, mother and daughter, okay, one leashing field, and that's nothing in front of the board. If he wants to go keep found his complaints, I won't.
If he can find out a little bit more about it.
I will. It's definitely in the Board of Health warehouse, but I will talk to the Alvinian.
Thank you.
Get the information.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any, any others want to talk to us? Everybody satisfied?
Yep.
Anybody read the minutes for May 2nd, 2022? All good?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of, uh, May 2nd, 2022 as presented.
Tina?
Yes. Can you see it?
Thanks, Brett.
Anybody sign the bills?
No, we haven't done the bill yet.
I don't think there was any.
Bills, no bills.
No bills?
Three one.
Oh, and Bill follows up here. Bill's right here, okay. Okay.
I didn't know the first couple of times either, Mike.
Get used to it. I'll make a motion to accept the bills as presented.
Anybody have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we, you were doing a lot of correspondence, or other business?
I have other business. I'm very disturbed about what went down the past week on this board. That some board member, I don't know who, as far as I'm concerned, tried to alter the vote, and it says it in the attorney's, uh, opinion. So somebody on this board went to the attorney and tried to get two other people recused, okay?
My opinion, I don't think it was somebody on the board.
Was it?
Well, that's what it said.
I know.
All right, well, I can only go by what's said. And, you know, the town has had enough of this nonsense. Those poor people who were here for their landlord apartment, the vitriol and pigginess and sour grapes in that audience, I felt so, the poor girl was shaking. It's disgusting what I saw here tonight. And I think this board, I don't know what the procedure is because we have to follow line, but, you know, rules for thee, but not for me in this town. We need to maybe put on the agenda, we need to talk to the attorney, we need to get it approved by the selectmen and find out what the hell happened.
I talked to the ethics board today, they said you can, you can be at the meeting. You can sit there at the meeting, but I, I took the way out and I recused myself.
What I'm getting at, aside, is somebody directly mailed the attorney, emailed the attorney, and see, see Ashley. Not supposed to happen.
No.
All right?
They didn't follow the.
State number one, right? Didn't follow protocol, right? Number two, you don't go to the attorney and ask if somebody else has to recuse himself. You go to the attorney and ask yourself, you have to turn if you have to recuse yourself because you may feel you have something, all right? Number three, I asked Ashley, I wish she didn't leave, I asked Ashley, who sent the email? And I get this buffoonery back, and it's buffoonery, that it's client attorney privilege. How can it be a client attorney privilege when we've got the attorney's response back? And it's sent back through the Board of Selectmen? Why does everything come back through the Board of Selectmen? If it's attorney-client privilege, why doesn't it go to the person who asked the question? I want to know what the hell's going on in this town. Are these attorneys, the selectmen's private attorneys? Why, why can't we know which board member, and so the response was? Well, I give you permission.
Can I show you permission to?
Ashley gave me permission and others in the board permission that we can go see town council and ask whatever questions we want. So this is where we're at. To find out the name of a person who has, as far as I can tell, no reason to have attorney-client privilege, we have the attorney's opinion. It's the other way around. You know who's going to the attorney, but you don't know what the attorney said, right? When you go to court, you know who's, who's the attorney and who's the. Right, so I'm being told all this buffoonery. And what I saw here tonight from the people in this crowd was so disgusting, the attacks on this board continued. It's been years, and that crap's gotta stop. We have an election with resounding confirmation from the people in this town, we want the nonsense to stop. And I hope people watch this, go on Facebook and Twitter, and I want to know why I have to go spend, what, three, $400 an hour to an attorney to find somebody's name who did something inappropriate? And we get yelled at because once in 25 years, somebody got a three-foot opening? The people start to see the ridiculousness of what's going on? And it's just a pure hate and vitriol that was on one side here. You know, it's disgusting. And what they did to those poor people tonight, it's an embarrassment to the town. So what I'm proposing is, we as a board, ask for town council, and we gotta find out why can the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, um, what's the word, just the word we want to do, um, on her own, without signing with the other board members of, of the Board of Selectmen summarily, that's the word, just, oh, yes, you can use an attorney, you can use, is that her power? Is that what she can do?
That becomes, uh, that becomes chaotic, and it shouldn't happen. It should be like what we were doing in the past.
The protocol.
Protocol. Agree with, all of us come to an agreement that we need to talk to an attorney. We send that to the, to the selectmen, then they give us a response. One of us, the chairman, talks to the attorney, comes back and relays it to the board, not like what happened in the last couple of weeks.
But that's the way we requested it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how we request it. And as far as the openings, it's always been six feet. So they would not put a door in, close it up to be a near, you know, uh, two families.
Well, what I'm asking here, aside. Excuse me?
What if they got the three feet for? Where did they come up with?
Well, the fridge was in the drawer.
Okay.
And that's, that's almost a standard opening.
But I don't want to get off topic here. What I'm trying to say is. But I don't wanna get off topic here. What I'm trying to say is, why is this board constantly attacked? I mean, I'm gonna just be very honest with you.
Because we're on solid ground.
Okay.
That's why.
That's why, okay.
We're on solid ground.
But i- it's just the dirty tactics. I think this board needs to set up, I don't know if we set up a hearing, I don't know if a line of those. I don't know what we gotta do, but, um, I think we need town council to find out what the heck happened. So from now on, can I just on my own? As far as I'm concerned, whoever did this, did this representing the board. Okay? And if some...
Without consulting us?
Without consulting the board.
I think we should ask for town council to be present here at a meeting.
And go through it.
And we go through the whole system.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
To write a letter to the selectmen?
Yeah.
Requesting them to join the next zoning board.
Town council.
Town council.
Oh, town council, sorry.
We request town council to be present at the, at the, our next meeting so we can hash this out and get it over with and, and go back to where we would, we would have to go, write a letter to the selectmen, requesting town council so they can come back here and talk to us.
And you want the selectmen present also, or just town council?
I don't want the selectmen to be present. I'd rather, I'd rather have...
It's us and our attorney.
Us and our attorney.
More of the executive session or just...
Sure.
Yes.
What gets my cry, I'm sorry and I apologize for hopping on it, because I was
No, I mean...
I was pretty upset when I, when I got here.
I didn't understand the, all of the emails that were coming back and forth.
Right.
I didn't understand what was happening.
They said that I had signs on my property. There was only one sign on the, if you saw that sign when, when you go by, past my house, it was between, between me and the soccer field. I had Bergana sign, I had my son's sign. They were close together. The other sign, somebody put it there. I didn't ask them, I didn't, nobody asked me to put it there. They put it there. When they came in front of the business where I have, I said, "Everybody come put their signs up." I'm sure you passed by it, so...
Everyone was there, yeah.
Everybody was there. And I wasn't, I, I wasn't, you know, it was...
I had my own suspicions about what that's all about, and I keep that to myself.
Oh, I know.
But what really upset me was two things, okay? And I hope everybody's paying attention, okay? These people were terrified. Did you see her shaking? I, when she left, I ha-, I went out there and I apologized to them, not for this board, but for the people who had that vitriol and pettiness. And did you see how those two applicants thought it was us? We didn't even get to the question.
We didn't even say nothing.
We didn't even say anything. And, and, and I have to say, and, and I don't know why they left, I felt that the zoning enforcement officer was part of that. You know, when I wish he was here, so I could say it to his face. I'm just very, how? This has to stop. The town voted for this to stop. I mean, it was overwhelming. The town wants this nonsense to stop. The towns...
The town people spoke.
They spoke.
They spoke and they wanted...
And we gotta work together.
They want change.
They want everybody to get along and, and this pettiness, a- and, I'm sorry, anybody who's on that side that wants to divide this town is a useful idiot. Okay? At this point, they're useful idiots. If they can't see the reality of what's going on, I'm sorry, but there's nothing, there's nothing else I can say. I was so disgusted. I'm so upset now for those poor people. I can't tell. I'm, I'm shaking that right now.
I mean, I, I think if they look at our record, I mean, as far as rental apartments, there's very few that we don't approve. I mean, you know...
We approved every one of them.
I know. If it's something that's totally outrageous, yeah, you gotta go back and redo it.
We sent it back to the, to the, to the architect and they came back with a correction.
And everything was fine.
I mean, we're probably gonna be in trouble for talking about this. But when we're trying to get something out here and you say enough is enough with this, I, I hope everybody saw the reaction of those two poor people.
Oh, there was no question about it, yeah.
She was shaking in her boots.
It's disgusting. Those people should be ashamed of themselves. They should all quit. They should all resign. I was disgusted. That's it, I'm done. I need to go to bed.
Can I just ask one clarification? Um, you're, you're requesting town council to attend the next meeting, to go into executive session. I do need to, like, align what you're going to be discussing, just like a summary.
A summary of what?
I'm sorry.
So you're looking for a summary of why we want the town council here at the executive, uh, at the, at the executive meeting on the next meeting?
We want, um, we need guidance on protocol. We need guidance on what do we do when a member
Gets hurt.
Uh, does not follow protocol? Do we have any, um,
Recourse?
recourse?
And what happened?
And we're not looking for an answer through the Board of Selectmen. We wanna meet, right? If I'm tip-top, turn, shut me up, okay? We wanna meet an executive session with council. And it's getting to the point, the way I see things, we might have to request our own council. Because this stuff has to stop. No, no resident should have to go through what they were put through tonight. And, and what bothered me was, they're very good at what they do. Those two people thought it was us. And I had to tell them, "No, no, no, no. We haven't even got to you yet. They're, they're complaining about one three-foot opening in, 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 uh..."
Thirty years.
I mean, you know, oh, I'm sure I'm talking about, I'm a bad guy. Well, fire me.
The biggest, I mean, most people are, are real nervous to come here anyhow. And what we try and do is put them at ease, right here to...
We're, we're talking about, we're not talking about the petition. We're talking about the plans of the town.
Yeah.
The conditions of, we're not talking about the petition. We're talking about what went down here tonight, the disgusting display from certain people in the audience, and, 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 and the, and the town voted stop. Didn't I say it was done?
Yes, you did.
So, Alana, and all the members, that we approved. I don't think there was any discussion about renewal. So maybe in the, is this letter, um...
You can...
Is it not in our town bylaws anyway?
Yeah.
Do you want to renew it?
At five years?
I think it's five years.
Yeah.
I think it is.
We don't have to put in there that it's, um, um, not another petition, it's just a regular renewal, right?
It's a review. Yeah, I think that's how it is.
I think that comes automatically.
Yeah, he thinks he probably has entered it.
So they basically just kind of like an administrative thing, they just...
Right, right.
Exactly, yeah.
But that's not automatic.
Uh, it is, I believe, yes, I believe that it's in the bylaws.
I don't know. Sir? Are you here for something?
Oh, Alana's dead. I'm curious. I wanted to see how the meeting went, that's all.
Take your dad's work.
Nice to meet you.
I've been on the board in East Bridgewater for eighteen years, so just curious.
So what'd you think of the zoo tonight?
I agree with that gentleman at the end there. Uh, my opinion of a board is the residents of a town are here to, to try to do something with their property, and you're there to try to make that happen.
Yeah.
And you should go out of your way to do that. Simple fact.
And, and we do. We do.
I can see that, but I can see other people that do not.
They're, uh, I can't say that. They were hurt by the, uh, election and then
An election has consequences.
Yes. Everything has consequences.
Pay eighty-five dollars for a ticket, yes, we all know.
Can you put that on a sign?
Wouldn't be a plausible sign.
What is a federal legal sign, yeah?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can you second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.